Good afternoon and welcome to the June 2, 2017 regularly scheduled meeting of the Orlando City Council. We're going to begin today's proceedings with the invocation offered today by Michael Dippie. And Michael is a lifelong resident of Orlando. He graduated from the University of Florida. Go Gators. College of Architecture and practiced in that field for eight years during the time Michael was inspired by Minister to quote, "Find an injustice or unmet need that truly bothers you and then dedicate yourself to do all that you can do to solve it." And as a result, Michael created I Dignity, which is a non-for-profit organization that assists the poor and disadvantaged in helping them to get proof of their identity. Since 2008, I Dignity has served over 18,000 individuals and has been replicated in several other communities. Michael serves on the Board of the Central Florida Coalition for the Homeless and is a member of First United Methodist Church. In his spare time, he likes to surf, play tennis, and spend time with family and friends. After the invocation, Commissioner Gray will lead us in the pledge. You may stand or remain seated.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, and members of this Orlando City Council for giving me the privilege of offering today's invocation. I have never been more proud of this city in which I was born than to have witnessed our response to the Pulse nightclub shooting. One of the healing moments that continues to resonate with me the strongest is the interfaith service where leaders of every imaginable faith and some with no faith at all gathered to speak about this tragedy and their beliefs. The meaning of each of their diverse perspectives could be summed up simply as love wins. Love always wins. With that thought, I ask that we take a moment to pray. Dear eternal and loving God, thank you for all that you are and the abundant blessings you have given to each of us and the city of Orlando. You are the true unconditional love as expressed in the freedom you have given to each of us to embrace you or reject you. Yet regardless, your gracious and boundless love remains. Love always wins. Thank you for giving us hearts to care, minds to thank, bodies to act, and this precious life to live. Help each of us to live it in a manner that is meaningful not only to ourselves but to our community and to you. Dear God, I thank you for each of the elected officials gathered here today. You and our community have entrusted them with the daunting task of wisely and selflessly governing our city. I thank each of them for their willingness to serve in this capacity. The Christian scripture states that, "From everyone who has been given much, much will be required; and from him who has been entrusted with much, even more will be demanded." I pray, dear God, that you bless each of these elected officials with the ability to meet these demands. Please grant them the insight and guidance to make the right decisions. Grant them the patience and perseverance to overcome all obstacles. Grant them the freedom and unity to foster peace, prosperity, order, and justice for everyone in our community. Most of all, dear God, please grant them the ability to wholly be led by love with the understanding that you love each of them more than they can ever imagine and knowing that love always wins. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, to the people who live in this city, one nation under God, and indivisible, the liberty of justice for all.
Let me call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the role to make a determination of a quorum, please?
Commissioner Gray.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
I'm here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Ainge.
Here.
Mayor Dyer.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum with all members present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, let's take up the minutes from the agenda review and City Council meetings of May 15.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ortiz, second by Commissioner Sheehan, all favorite motion. Indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries right into awards, presentations, and recognitions. It's really great that a lot of our leadership in the city of Orlando has been getting recognized as being some of the top talent in the municipal workforces, and we have another recognition of that sort, and Byron Brooks is going to make the introduction.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Each year, the American Public Works Association sponsors and presents to top ten individuals, the Top Ten Public Works Leaders of the Year. Award to those leaders whose excellence in public works earns them this distinction as being the top ten. And even better, you get to have your picture, as our honorary does, in their national magazine as well. The honorees awarded this recognition for their professionalism, expertise, and personal dedication to improving the quality of life in their communities through the advancement of public work services and technology. At this time, I would like to introduce Mr. Brian Usher, Public Works Director for the city of Largo, Florida, and past president of the American Public Works Association, to present this award to our very own Rick Howard.
Good afternoon, and thank you very much for the introduction. Mayor Dyer, members of the City Commission, on behalf of the American Public Works Association, 29,600 members across North America, it's my honor to be here this afternoon, on behalf of that organization to recognize one of Orlando's own. Top Ten Public Works Leader was initiated in 1960 to recognize individuals that personify excellence in serving the public interest through outstanding performance in the field of public works. The award recognizes excellence and dedication in public service by acknowledging outstanding achievements by public works professionals. Since being established 57 years ago, this gives an opportunity for APWA to single out 10 individuals each year representing the finest in our profession. The award criteria is based on exemplary performance in the field of public works. It is not based on performance or participation in APWA, its branches, or chapters. This award is akin to a lifetime achievement award. It recognizes people for their contributions, their enhancements to their professions, and all that they have brought to their communities. Each year, when the President of APWA has the honor of calling the 10 recipients, the 10 recipients are usually struck somewhat silent, and Rick was this year. They can't believe that they've been honored by their peers by this award. But Rick, like so many in the past, was very quick to point out the members of his team, many of which are here with you today, without whom he wouldn't have been able to achieve this award all this time. Today, we recognize 27 Top Ten Leader of the Year, Orlando's Public Works Director, Richard Howard. Since joining the city in 1985 in Streets and Drainage Bureau, Rick has been in our industry, not just here in central Florida, he has been a leader across the United States. Under his guidance, Orlando Public Works has taken the lead in so many varied areas, including solid waste, reduction in fuel consumption by the city's fleet, water reclamation, water reuse, critical wetland management, and stormwater utility operations. Rick has never won, as you know, to sit back and watch the world go by. Besides his commitment to the city of Orlando and the American Public Works Association, he's been active in the Florida Engineering Society, American Society of Civil Engineers, American Society of Highway Engineers, Boy Scouts of America as a troop chair, assistant scout master, council committee member. And he also has judged and captain the Dr. Nelson Ying Orange County Science Exposition at Rollins College. The list of supporting statements that were presented in Rick's application is long and very impressive, ranging from some of you on the City Commission, to his peers and the city staff, to people from across the state. Rick has spent his career dedicated to serving and improving the city of Orlando. He's actively planned to make solid waste systems fully sustainable in the next 12 years. Traffic management technology, as you well know, has been key, including such things as the ParkMe app, roadway maintenance projects, and general infrastructure attention. There's so many innovative ways that Rick has had an impact, not only in this community but across the state. As many of you know, Rick has been actively involved in almost every project that's come out of the ground in the last few years in Orlando, including the Lake Eola Fountain renovation, Camping Road Station renovation, Orlando City Stadium MLS, Amway Center, and the Dr. Phillips Performing Arts Center. If you've not had the opportunity yet, I strongly encourage you to look at Rick's application package. It truly is amazing and leaves no doubt why Rick was awarded APWA's Top Ten this year in 2017. And so it's my honor to present to Rick Howard, 2017 Top Ten Public Works Leader of the Year, Director of Public Works, City of Orlando, Florida. Rick?
(applause) Can you find the off-screen picture of Rick? Come on, family. Come on, family. Really, go on, Rick. Come on, family. Put those green tags on Rick's back. Put on Rick's back. (laughter) Motley Crue. (laughter) (applause) Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District Three, Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. And let me also extend our congratulations to Rick. Thank you, Rick. Congratulations. So Commissioners and those in attendance, it's really hard to believe that in another week, it will be a year since the Pulse tragedy. And on that day, it was the worst, most tragic day in the history of the city of Orlando. But today, I could not be more proud of how our city and its residents responded. Most cities would respond with fear and hatred and anger, and instead, we were able to respond with love and compassion and unity. And next Monday, our community will take a stand again together to honor the memory of the 49 innocent lives that were lost too soon and support the families and the other survivors. We've designated June 12th as Orlando United Day, a day of love and kindness. And on that day, there are a number of community events and activities that you can participate in, and there is a listing of all of the activities at orlandounitedday.com. Commissioner Sheehan, during her remarks, are going to update you on a number of the events, especially the major vigil event at Lake Eola. We're also encouraging the community to participate in Acts of Love and Kindness, which is a homegrown movement led by the One Orlando Alliance with direct input from the victims' family. And for more information on that, you can go to actlovegive.com. And I have the official proclamation that has been executed by all the members of the City Council as well as all of the members of the Orange County Commission. Whereas on June 12th was the most, June 12th, 2016, was the most tragic day in the history of the Orlando community, and each successive June 12th will forever be reserved to honor the memory of the 49 innocent lives taken too soon from us, as well as those harmed that morning at the Pulse nightclub. And whereas the tragedy deeply impacted the LGBTQ+, Latinx, and other communities of color, as well as countless central Florida families, friends, and advocates worldwide, and whereas in the hours, days, weeks, and months following the tragedy, our community united in solidarity to stand with the heartbroken families and loved ones and came out in great numbers to support the injured and affected. And whereas, we will always remember that Orlando responded to hate with an unprecedented display of love and unity, and we will always be remembered as a community that confronted tragedy with the best that humanity has to offer. And whereas in response, we did not stand alone during our darkest days, but instead, we inspired not just our neighbors but also friends from across the globe to stand with us in our community by becoming Orlando United, showing the world that love can defeat hate. And whereas, June 12th will be officially dedicated to honoring the memory of the 49 innocent victims, to supporting the survivors, and to comforting the grieving, and to recognizing the compassion and love that was displayed by the central Florida community following the tragedy. Now therefore, we, City of Orlando Mayor Buddy Dyer, Orange County Mayor Theresa Jacobs, do hereby proclaim from this day forward that June 12th will be Orlando United Day, a day of love and kindness to the city of Orlando and Orange County, and do hereby call upon all citizens to reflect on the 49 lives lost and to honor them by treating all people with respect, love, and kindness. Signed by all the members of both councils. Earlier today, violence once again touched our central Florida region as five innocent people lost their lives at a business on North Forsyth Road. Our thoughts and prayers are with those families of the victims and the survivors and everyone impacted by this act of workplace violence. We're grateful to the sheriff's office as the deputies responded extremely quickly to the scene and to honor these victims as well as the lives taken during recent terrorist attacks in England. Please join us for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Okay, how about on to some positive news? Earlier this year, Orlando was designated as one of five smart cities by the Smart Cities Council, which is the world's largest smart city network. And we were selected because of our commitment to using smart technologies to seek innovative ways to better connect with and meet the needs of our residents. As part of this designation, the city will receive tailored guidance on how to further develop and implement a comprehensive approach to applying smart technologies in Orlando and throughout central Florida. And we are fortunate to have a number of the Smart Cities Council representatives in Orlando, meeting with our staff and partners. And I would like to recognize Dr. Stuart Cohen, who is with us today, and he is the chief scientist with the Smart City Council, and he's here in chambers. Thank you for being here. So I just want to quickly mention two items on our council agenda, and I suspect that Commissioner Ainge, Commissioner Hill may want to come on these as well. But we have an item that we're going to acquire the ownership and control of six apartment complexes along Orange Center Boulevard, which were recently in bankruptcy. We had previously acquired from the federal government the properties that are on the north side of Orange Avenue and subsequently transferred those properties to the lift organizations, and they're being redeveloped. But the area is still blighted with the neglected apartments that are on the south side, and now we will, with this vote, have control of that property as well so that we can revitalize that entire area. What's, what's great about the area is there's fantastic neighborhoods just behind the two blighted properties, but the blighted properties have really concealed that, and we're going to have an opportunity to make a huge difference there. So I look forward to working with Commissioner Ainge and Commissioner Hill and our residents as we figure out the future redevelopment of that portion of the area. And then I know one of Commissioner Hill's primary goals this year has been additional single-family housing in the Paramore neighborhood, and we are going to approve the rankings for a design-build firm today to build 10 new single-family homes in Paramore that are on city-owned lots. So congratulations, Commissioner Hill. With that, we're going to move on to consent agenda, and the consent agenda has a number of items that are worked, that are voted on through a single vote of council. And we give each of our Commissioners an opportunity to comment, as I did, on items on the consent agenda and/or update you with important happenings from the district. We rotate the order that we do that, and we are, Commissioner Gray is first up today.
Perfect. We'll start right at the top. Perfect. First of all, I wanted to give my congrats to Rick. Well done. When I first came to council, it was obvious to me that Rick and his team at Public Works were on top of their game, and so congrats, Rick. Well deserved. Attended on the 22nd of May, the KPMG groundbreaking in Lake Nona, it was just, first of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and our team in economic development for their part in attracting that. I think, Mayor helped me, was it 45 cities they were looking at? Perhaps even more?
Yeah, it was somewhere in that range, and I think narrowed down to three or four.
Yeah, I think, I think it was Dallas and...
Atlanta, maybe?
Atlanta, thank you. Anyway, the point is, each time I'm lucky enough to go to one of these groundbreakings, I keep hearing the word "game changer," and it's true whether it was the VA Hospital or Nemours Hospital, or UCF, and USTA, and now KPMG. So, point is, if you get a chance, come on out to the southeast side of town. I know it's a little drive or something, but there's a lot going on out there, and I'd love for you guys to see it because they're an integral part of the city. So that was quite an event. And then the only other thing on the agenda, I declared in the agenda review, but I'll do it again, I have a conflict on ordinance 26 and 28, the first read, so I'll try to remember to declare that, but I've turned it into paperwork, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Gray. What day is that? Happy hour, are you host down there in the southeast?
Every Sunday morning at 11:00. Buddy Mary's and a church service. Come on down.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Let me follow his steps here. Yes, do come to the southeast, especially at Seminole Quarter. Please do so. We're revamping the whole area. It's going to be the new place for fun. Anyhow, congratulations, Rick. Well deserved. And I'd like to also thank Ms. Brooke Bonnet. Where is she? Is she here today? Ms. Brooke Bonnet and her team for such a great achievement in bringing the community together for our Perimeter and Development Forum last Thursday by allowing our constituents to evaluate us, we have a better insight on how to properly serve their needs. So that was awesome. Great job. I was glad to see neighbors coming together to rebuild the Monterey Association. Associations are the catalyst to keep our neighbors safe, involved, and improving constantly. As my good friend, Mr. Lynn Hill, would say, "Our people are our greatest asset." So, kudos to Rebecca Fernandez. She did a great job putting that group together. Our team is always shining in our community. There's no doubt that our district keeps growing and growing. And on May 18th, Shell Terror FPO Orlando Executive had a great grand opening ceremony for their 5.5 million hangar facility at the Orlando Executive Airport. Shell Terror's face one project includes two hangars totaling 22,600 square feet with 3,600 square feet of office space. These state-of-the-art facilities would not only meet but also anticipate the travel needs of our community. So even our executive airport is shining. I was honored to be part of the Acceleration High School graduation. Seventy-three students marched towards a brighter future by obtaining their high school diplomas. Congratulations to the class of 2017. On Saturday, June 10th, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m., the Orlando Police Department invites you, so do I, to our community barbecue at the Englewood Neighborhood Center. Come on over and bring the whole family. I believe the chief is going to be there, so please come on over. And if he wasn't, he's going to be now, right? And have some fun with all of us. I'd like to give a huge shout-out to Ms. Ruby from our Englewood Community Center. She was featured, in case those of you haven't seen it, by WWE as a member of our community making a difference in our youth. I invite you all to visit Ruby's garden and learn all about what Ms. Ruby has to teach. This past Saturday, we had, I almost sound like an announcer, don't I? On the radio here. Well, anyhow, this past Saturday, we had a peaceful demonstration with over 200 people trying to create awareness of the fears and inhumane conditions that undocumented immigrants are facing in our nation. They're seeking a trust act so they don't have to live in fear in our city. So, just to keep you posted. And to end, almost, our thoughts and prayers are with those that lost their lives this morning in that tragedy at Forsyth. Let's keep them, let's keep them in our prayers, let's keep them in our hearts. And along those lines, let me also remind everybody, the mayor just mentioned, on June 12th, we commemorate one year after this terrible tragedy at Pulse. Let's never forget the 49 gentle souls that lost their lives. Let's keep them and their families in our hearts. Thoughts and prayers. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District Three, Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. And let me also extend our congratulations to Rick. Thank you, Rick, for your service to our city. Our condolences are with our friends and families of those injured in London attacks and this morning's workplace shooting. I'd like to remember them as, it's just one of those things that we cannot avoid, but we can make sure that it doesn't happen again. As we all take this week to reflect and remember on those who were injured or killed at the attack at Pulse, we're heartened by the number of community partners who stepped up to act, love, and give in honor of this legacy left by those who were taken too soon. So I ask all of you to take, to join this movement, and the mayor has mentioned that earlier, and as each of us are. Quick announcements, if you are a resident of the College Park, consider joining me tonight at the College Park Neighborhood Association at 7:00 at the Community Center. As a reminder, also on Monday nights, the Audubon Park Community Market takes place, so please come over there if you get a chance. And also enjoy the free outdoor movie at the College Park Community Center starting this summer, starting on Friday, June 16th at 7:00. And of course, we've got Father's Day coming up in, I guess, a couple of weeks before we meet again, and I remember all those fathers. And you get a free admission to Lou Gardens, Bring Your Father to Lou Gardens, which is a great way to do that. On the agenda today, I want to mention just one thing, and that's on B7, award to the Benson Construction Company for the dubstret work on the sand trap and sand bunkers. It's, I mention it because that money is coming out of the dubstret R&amp;R that we continue to be profitable there, and we use that money to go back and build up that, our sand traps over there. It's a small detail, we get a lot of those small issues, but it'll make our golf course more playable, and it'll make our golf course more profitable.
Especially for people like you who spend a lot of time in sand traps.
I don't spend any time in sand traps.
Robert Stewart Memorial Sand Trap.
Yeah, we got plenty of them, don't we? But I just mention that because of how we do things around the city. We do a good job trying to make sure that we are using our resources back and investing them back in the way we are. So I share that for that sake. And that's all that I have, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District Four, Commissioner Sheehan.
Thank you, Mayor, and I also'd like to extend congratulations to Rick Howard on his Public Works Award as well. And on item D1, we talked about this earlier with Kyle, and apparently, I do not have a conflict, because I would only have a conflict if I was doing something unethical or...
You'd only have a conflict...
And I don't think putting a historical marker is actually an unethical act, so I think I'm okay.
Yeah, you'd only have a conflict of interest if it inured to your pecuniary gain or loss, and it doesn't, so no conflict of interest there.
So the John Mark, marker will go forward with...
And to end, almost, our thoughts on prayers are with those that lost their lives this morning and that tragedy at Forsyth. Let's keep them, let's keep them in our prayers. Let's keep them in our hearts. And along those lines, let me also remind everybody, the mayor just mentioned, on June 12th, we commemorate one year after this terrible tragedy at Pulse. Let's never forget the 49 gentle souls that lost their lives. Let's keep them and their families in our hearts. Thoughts and prayers. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you Commissioner. We'll move to District 3, Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you Mayor. And let me also extend our congratulations to Rick. Thank you, Rick, for your service to our city. Our condolences are with our friends and families of those injured in London attacks and this morning's workplace shooting. I'd like to remember them as, it's just one of those things that we cannot avoid, but we can make sure that it doesn't happen again. As we all take this week to reflect and remember on those who were injured or killed at the attack at Pulse, we're heartened by the number of community partners who stepped up to act, love, and give in honor of this legacy left by those who were taken too soon. So I ask all of you to take, to join this movement. And the mayor has mentioned that earlier, and as each of us are. So, quick announcements. If you are a resident of the College Park, consider joining me tonight at the College Park Neighborhood Association at 7:00 at the community center. As a reminder, also on Monday nights, the Audubon Park Community Market takes place, so please come over there if you get a chance. And also enjoy the free outdoor movie at the College Park Community Center starting this summer, starting on Friday, June 16th at 7:00. And of course, we've got Father's Day coming up in, I guess, a couple of weeks before we meet again. And I remember all those fathers. And you get a free admission to Lou Gardens. Bring your father to Lou Gardens, which is a great way to do that. On the agenda today, I want to mention just one thing, and that's on B7, award to the Benson Construction Company for the dubstret work on the sand trap and sand bunkers. It's, I mention it because that money is coming out of the dubstret R&amp;R that we continue to be profitable there. And we use that money to go back and build up that, our sand traps over there. It's a small detail. We get a lot of those small issues, but it'll make our golf course more playable and it'll make our golf course more profitable.
Especially for people like you who spend a lot of time in sand traps.
I don't spend any time in sand traps.
Robert Stewart Memorial Sand Trap.
Yeah, we got plenty of them, don't we? But I just mention that because of how we do things around the city. We do a good job trying to make sure that we are using our resources back and investing them back in the way we are. So, I share that for that sake. And that's all that I have, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you Commissioner. We'll move to District 4, Commissioner Sheen.
Thank you Mayor, and I also'd like to extend congratulations to Rick Howard on his Public Works Award as well. And on item D1, we talked about this earlier with Kyle, and apparently I do not have a conflict because I would only have a conflict if I was doing something unethical or... And I don't think putting a historical marker is actually an unethical act, so I think I'm okay.
Yeah, you'd only have a conflict of interest if it inured to your pecuniary gain or loss, and it doesn't. So, no conflict of interest there.
So the John Mark, marker will go forward without, you know, an issue with me getting pecuniary gain from that, so I will be voting on that. Also on the agenda, the Public Art Advisory Board, I would just like to thank Douglas Kegler of Collaborate MD. There are three paintings in the rotunda. They're palette knife paintings that he had done and donated to the city, and they're just absolutely stunning. And, you know, especially in light of the Pulse tragedy, it just shows the bright light and beauty of us coming together and those paintings really capture that. They're actually in the rotunda and will be while we're observing the Day of Remembrance. And so if you get a chance to check those out, they are in the rotunda right now. There are also 49 portraits in the Terrace Gallery. I just want to thank Shannon and the Manella Museum staff. What an amazing event that was over the weekend. And the 49 portraits will be given to the families after, after the exhibit. And I just think that's another really beautiful display of love and, you know, how this community's come together. And actually, Mia Merlin is actually from Atlanta, Georgia, and, you know, came down and curated that. And it was just an absolutely amazing, amazing event over the weekend. And some of the families came and they were really touched by the fact that we haven't forgotten their loved ones. And that's the one that they, that's the one thing that they really feel very strongly about. And we do have a lot of events coming up on June 12th, the Day of Remembrance. Again, cityoforlando.net and it's Orlando United Day. But the events are going to start with the Orange County History Center is going to be open from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM with items that were lovingly left at Lake Iola, at Dr. Phillips Performing Arts Center, and also at Pulse. It's a very touching tribute, including the 49 crosses that were, again, lovingly made by a man who came here from Chicago to leave those. We're going to be unveiling the C2C flag with Mayor Jacobs at 10:00 at the Orange County Administration Building. From 11:00 to 1:00 PM, we will be at Pulse Night Club for reflections and remembrance, and also to recognize the first responders. Orlando Love Remembering Our Angels will be on June 12th at 7:00 PM at Lake Iola. And I want to thank Karen Brown and Doug White with D-Squared Productions. They've put together a beautiful, beautiful ceremony to honor those lost. And Olga Tanyan, a very famous singer from Puerto Rico, is going to be performing. She's wonderful. And actually, what a lot of people don't know about Olga Tanyan is she actually visited many of the victims in the hospital and sang at many of the funerals. This woman's an international singer and she took her time to personally sing at these funerals. What a wonderful, wonderful human being. So, if anybody wonders why Olga Tanyan was chosen, that is why Olga Tanyan was chosen to perform at this event. And also, our own Cassandra Lewis, who lost her, some of her friends at this tragic shooting, she will be performing as well. It's going to be a beautiful night of inspiration and it's really for the families. So I know some folks were disappointed that they were not included in the event at Lake Iola, but we really tailored this for who the families wanted to be there, because this really truly is for them. What a lot of folks don't realize is that we all saw the vigils and the public events that happened in the aftermath of Pulse, but the families didn't get to experience that because they were burying their children. So this is really an opportunity for us to show that love and support to them in a way that they can actually feel that and participate in it. So, and I also want to thank the city staff and county staff. They've been amazing. We've been planning this for over six months and I want to thank everybody for working together. I know sometimes it's been, you know, tough to get everybody on the same page with the Pulse owner and, you know, with Barbara. We wanted to make sure all the events were coordinated, and I want to thank everyone for working together on that. And we will be back at Pulse from 10:00 PM to midnight for reflections and healing. So that's, again, the slate of events throughout the day. It's all on our website. And again, I think it's really important as we move into this Day of Remembrance to show that we, these 49 will never be forgotten. They were young people who had promising lives, were cut way too short. And that's the one thing I keep hearing from the families over and over again, is they do not want their loved ones to be forgotten. So thanks for everyone. I hope we have a good turnout at Lake Iola so we can show these families, you know, what they missed when they were going through their worst time, that they could really see the love and support from Orlando. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you Commissioner. Move to District 5, Commissioner Hill.
Thank you Mayor. I also would like to extend my congratulations to you also, Rick. More so of how you always answer my call in an expeditious manner in email and always show such humility when you say, you know, it's a team effort. And thank you for being a part of the team. Mayor Dyer saw earlier this week, even when the nation, well, the world was somewhat, and were disappointed about this global Paris treaty, that you stepped up as a mayor to join other mayors around the nation and stated that we are still committed here that politics is local and we are just as committed to a greener, sustainable city and country. So thank you, Mayor, for stepping up. Of course, as the mayor stated earlier, one of my biggest things when I came into office was affordable homes in District 5. And I'd like to thank staff for your diligence. I know you've been working hard on this the last two years. I wanted it soon as I got in office, but nothing happens overnight. And I'm glad to see this on the agenda as we move forward. And I have more comments when you come up for the presentation of the CRA. Of course, this is in Commissioner Ains' district, the B3 item of the purchase of the first 100 properties. But I represent the homeowners that it's surrounded by this property. And for years, they've been quite affected by the blight in that area and concerned about it. And I've reached out to all of them and let them know that it's been purchased. That's our Sunset, Clear Lake, Bunch Manor properties and homeowners. And they have been a strong community in the city for decades and decades. And they're quite excited to see that we have been the ones to purchase that property and that we're going to move forward to revitalize that area as we're doing with that lift project. On May 20th, I was able to help host a free health event with Be a Player. This is my second year. And throughout the city, we invited youth to come and get free physicals. And we had about 1,000 students come to our Jones High School and they were able to get sports physicals to go out for the school year. In summer programs, which we have here in the city of Orlando, we have cheerleading and football programs that are being activated this summer. And all of those kids were able to get free physicals. And I'd like to thank our Recreation Department for assisting, what happened to fund many of the kids in the city of Orlando with those free physicals. Also, that evening, I was able to be a, if you would say, celebrity escort for this phenomenal program that Mr. Martin E. James and Josie N. James does yearly. It's called Runway to Hope Spring Fashion Soraya. And it was at the Rosen Shingle Creek. And what it does, they raise millions and millions of dollars for families and youth cancer, that's impacted by cancer. And this year, Mayor and Council, I went backstage. It was almost 160, oh, Commissioner Gray was there also. He joined me. We were there about six hours, but it was well worth it. And met a little girl. They asked us to, because it was so many kids, if we could go back once again and walk other kids. And my last time around was about 11:30 that night. I got ready to walk this one young girl, African-American young girl, and I asked her, where did she stay? Here in the city of Orlando. And she told me, no, I stay in Lake County. I said, where in Lake County? She said, Taveri's. I said, well, I was a little girl. I grew up in Taveri's. And I said, so what's your name? She said, Zoli. I said, what's your parents' name? She says, Belinda. But come to find out, out of the 160 kids that I escorted, that was out there, that I was holding my little cousin's hand that I had never met, escorting her. And that was just amazing. And I knew I was in the right place at that time. And I'd just like to thank the N. James for all that they do. Zoli, she's been fighting cancer now for about four years. She's 10 years old. But that night, you could just see the gleam in those kids' eyes as they walked that runway and receiving all the love from the community. Of course, on May 22nd, I, along with staff, hosted our first community meeting. And where we're now have major focus on the Mercy Drive Corridor of District 5. We're creating a vision plan. And I was quite excited to see that we had almost 150 residents from that corridor out there. It was just an outpour of support. And with them being there, we was not telling them what we wanted to see. We were just listening to what the community wanted there in that corridor of Mercy Drive. I'd like to thank Jason Burton and Sherri Gaultch and our city planning staff and the Canaan Associates and Veronica Anderson for making that a successful event. And many of the things that they spoke about will be long-term action plans. But there were some things that we could fix right away. It was a few potholes and some tree trimming and things of that nature, so we're on top of that. On Saturday, May 22nd, along with the Experience Church and the Coogic Women National Convention, they came out to the Callahan area and helped with, of course, I know this is a mixed politics and prayer, but folks need a little prayer every now and then, and especially in that community. And they prayed with the residents over there and some of the homeless community. They clothed them, they fed them, and sung with them. And this was a feel-good event. And hopefully, some people had hope after we left that day that, you know, change will come. On May 30th, I served as the graduation speaker for Orlando Science School, their eighth grade graduation. I have a youth advisory board and many of these youth on that board are Orlando Science School students. So it was quite fulfilling to go and see many of them transitioning from middle school to high school and knowing that they have served the city with over 300-plus community hours. And the last time that I checked, I think that added up to thousands and thousands of dollars with these youth volunteering that we saved in the District 5 budget. So with that, Mayor, I'd like to thank you for your support with this housing initiative, and that's all I have.
Thank you Commissioner. We'll move to District 6, Commissioner Ains.
Thank you Mayor, and I'd like to say congratulations, Rick Howard. Of course, you don't call me back when I call you. But that's okay. We eventually get in touch with one another. But seriously, congratulations on your award and this is really well-deserving. As a matter of fact, when Allen left, you know, you were one of my, you were my tops as Forest Public Works Director. And so it was with Mayor Dyer's appointment of you that was hands-down. So, you've been doing outstanding work, even, even beyond Public Works Director. So, thank you so very much. And then also, item B3 on the agenda, and this is dealing with the, the purchase of the apartment complexes on Orange Center Boulevard. Mainly Colonial Manor Apartments, 1 and 2, and Lakeview Apartments, 1 and 2, Savoye Apartments, and Bunch Manor Apartments. And of course, Mayor, we do have residents that are living in the Savoye Apartments. So I know the city is going to work with them, right Byron? Going to work with them as we go through this particular process. So this, this particular process starts out with the city being in very good position to purchase the units for $700,000, plus about $5,000 more or less with the closing, closing cost. But at the same time, when you look at the amount of liens that have been placed on these buildings, it's probably right at about $4 million. So, this, this is a good deal, I think, for the city of Orlando. And we're not purchasing it at $4,700,000, but $700,000. And I think that's good that the public really knows that, that they kind of understand just a little bit. I can't get into all of the details. I'm not the expert. But I would say Attorney Colbert from Gray Robinson, who did an outstanding job as an outside counsel in representing the city in the bankruptcy court down in Miami. And of course, Wes Powell, our Assistant City Attorney, right here in Orlando, that was working closely with Attorney Colbert to really help make this, this possible. So my congratulations to the city on this effort because I know that we want to get the area cleaned up and we want some good affordable housing in there for the people so that we can bring back more students into Jones High School, as well as Orange Center Elementary School. And then, reference to the Runway to Hope project. Yeah, you forgot me too, you know. You along with Rick Howard. But I was also there with Commissioner Hill and Commissioner Gray at this event. It was a great event. And I had the opportunity to walk my great nephew. And he was five years old, or he is five years old, and he has a very serious blood disorder. And you can't tell it by his activity because he is very busy and moving about and everything. But it was a great event to be there. And so many other stars throughout Orlando were there. A lot of our news personalities, television, and also newsprint were there on hand as well. And then on Tuesday, May 30th, I attended the Church of God in Christ 67th International Women's Convention, a conference that was held at Rosen Shingle Creek. And I believe there were over 10,000 to 15,000 women here in Orlando. They chose Orlando because they love coming back to Orlando. This is a international ministry. Their bishop is Charles E. Blake Senior out of California. And we presented a proclamation to him and to Mother Barbara McCool Lewis. She's the general supervisor. This is her, she received this appointment at this Orlando convention. So this is her inaugural appointment here in Orlando. And it was befitting that we gave her a key to the city as well. So she was very pleased with that. Bishop Blake was pleased with this proclamation. Regina McGill was on hand to help orchestrate a lot of this. And it was done through one of our local pastors, Mother Mildred Eason of Community Fellowship Church of God in Christ Church. So this was a great event and very well represented. Of course, June was able to buy a brand-new hat and some more clothing outfits there. So, the Coogic women, they love to dress and they love their big hats, so. Then also, on Wednesday, May 31st, I held a community meeting spring into action for the residents of Richmond Heights, Richmond Estates, and Lake Richmond neighborhoods. The meeting was very well-attended. There were approximately about 75 residents that were there. And we had a great representation from city staff, from police to fire to public works, code enforcement. I really want to thank everybody from the city that really participated in, in this event. And then we had some other outside vendors as well as Lynx there and, and Animal Control with Orange County and Rebuild Together Orlando. So we, we had a wonderful time at that event. Many people went away pleased and they're still looking for more action from the city to help continue to build and strengthen their neighborhood. And the last item that I have is, oops, two more little items. One, this is real quick. The Veterans Town Hall meeting was held at the Dr. James R. Smith Center on Saturday, June 3rd. There was a penning ceremony and I was there to pen these veterans and give them certificates. These veterans were from the Vietnam War. And so we were there to congratulate them and to express to them how much... and to express to them how much we really care for their service. And the the veterans were very diverse. There were probably about twenty, twenty-five veterans there, and the Raffman Club as well as the Veterans Administration were mainly responsible for this event, and I was there to support them. And then on Saturday, I attended the Taste of Haiti of Orlando event. This event was at the Gaston Edwards Park off of North Orange Avenue. There were about thirteen hundred to fifteen hundred people in attendance. Haiti's Council General, Pierre Max Charles, was on hand. Lot of family fun activities. And the one thing about Gaston Edwards Park, it was like a perfect location, Commissioner Stewart. And the thing about it is, most people say, when you hold events dealing with the Haitian people, they won't go outside of their neighborhood to attend. But that myth, that myth has been debunked. So many people were there and people from throughout Orlando, Tampa, Miami, and throughout the central Florida region were there too. I was one of five judges for the Taste of Haiti Orlando Cooking Contest, and there was a winning chef from Orlando, and he's non-Haitian, but he had to cook Haitian food. So that says a lot with the diversity and how people are involved, and especially these chefs being able to adapt to different cuisines. So the crowd was very diverse. It was very friendly atmosphere. We did have OPD there as off-duty. Not much of rain, so it didn't stop us, and it was a great event. And Mayor, with that, I move the consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Hill. Let's see, we've taken note of Commissioner Gray's, was that on the consent agenda? Oh, the ordinances.
No ordinances.
Ordinances, okay. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Without objection, we will recess the city council meeting and convene the CRA meeting. Thomas, we have one item that, it's the item I mentioned and Commissioner Hill has mentioned.
Correct. Thank you and good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. As Mayor mentioned, item number one today is ranking and contract negotiations for design bill services for CRA Paramore Housing associated with RFP one-seven-zero-two-four-seven. Consistent with the very high prioritization and emphasis of the current administration, Mayor Dyer and the current Commissioner, Commissioner Hill, as well as the CRA, and consistent with the DT outlook, our Community Redevelopment Agency Area Redevelopment Area Plan, and request for proposals, RFP was for design bill services associated with ten single-family homes was issued in Paramore, was issued on March twenty-first of this year. There were five firms that responded to that solicitation. They were all certified on April twenty-eighth, and on May third, an advisory committee met and shortlisted the top-ranked three firms and scheduled them for oral presentations and final presentations. On May seventeenth, we heard those formal interviews and final presentations, and advisory committee met subsequent to that and generated a ranking as follows. Number one is R.A.O. Burns Incorporated. Number two is Vodum Construction, and number three is H.J. High Construction. The advisory committee was chaired by yours truly and included Tom Connery, our CIP Division Manager of City, Orin Henry, Housing and Community Development Director, Terry De La Honte, who is a member of the CRA Advisory Board, and Byron Razor, who is a contract compliance investigator with the MBE officer. We noted that R.A.O. Burns Incorporated has proposed utilizing thirty-four percent MBE subconsultant participation, and thus their staff is requesting approval of the advisory committee's ranking and approval for the chief procurement officer to proceed with negotiations with the top-rate firm, R.A.O. Burns Incorporated, and authorize execution of an agreement in an amount not to exceed two million dollars. Should negotiations with the top-ranked firm prove unsuccessful, approved negotiations will successively rank firms until a successful agreement is reached.
I move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Sheen. Commissioner Hill?
Yeah, I I spoke with staff earlier. As we move forward with developing single-family homes there in the Paramore area, I would like for us to consider bundle packages where we have local, well, not necessarily local, but smaller builders builders able to develop housing there in Paramore where it's not as extensive as ten, fifteen homes in one RFP, but we have two to four to five properties, lots developed, not lots, but homes.
Okay, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Further business to come before the CRA, Thomas?
There's none, Mayor. Thank you.
And we'll stand adjourned and we will reconvene the city council meeting without objection. Okay, we're on new business, electing two mayors pro temp for one-year terms beginning July twenty-seventeen and running through June twenty-eighteen. I will open the floor for nominations for Mayor Pro Temp One.
I move Patty Sheen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion, there's a second for Commissioner Sheen to serve as Mayor Pro Temp One. Without objection, I'll close the nominations and we might as well formally vote. All in favors indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, those opposed, congratulations, Commissioner Sheen. I will now open the floor for motions for Mayor Pro Temp Two.
Who's next in rotation?
Commissioner Hill.
I don't know who's next. Commissioner Hill? I would like to nominate Commissioner Regina Hill.
Second. Motion for Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner, or by Commissioner Sheen for Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Just for the public's notice, we kind of have a rotation that we, it's informal, but the Mayor Pro Temp Two becomes the Mayor Pro Temp One, and then there's an order so that everybody gets a chance over the course of several years to be the Mayor Pro Tems. And the, again, it's informal, but Commissioner Sheen and Commissioner Hill were in the rotation. All right, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Mayor, I wanted to speak before you actually took the vote. And what I'm speaking of, and this is nothing against Commissioner Hill, but Commissioner Hill is in reelection mode, and I think if we are voting her in as Mayor Pro Temp Two, it kind of shows that the city is somewhat showing a little favoritism. And so with that, I cannot support the motion and I would be voting no on this.
Commissioner, I know that other folks up for reelection have been starting their pro temps, so.
I don't know why it's a problem now.
Okay. All right, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed?
No.
Okay, show it six-one.
And then, Mayor, I'd like to recuse myself as being a, a, as a canvasser for the election that's coming up.
You can do that, but you just need to put that in writing.
Okay.
It's not appropriate right now.
All right, thank you.
Okay, let's move on to hearings, ordinances, second reading. Number one, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance twenty-seventeen dash twenty-five, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Orlando, Florida relating to medical marijuana dispensaries, amending chapter fifty-eight Orlando City Code to providing zoning regulations for medical marijuana dispensaries, providing a cap on the number of dispensaries, special-use separation regulations, and special operational regulations, further providing definitions for the grandfathering of certain existing nonconformities, and the termination of the temporary moratorium on medical marijuana dispensaries, providing legislative findings on perseverance, codification, correction of scripturner's errors, and an effective date.
It says four, but that's all of us, I think, but I'll move it.
I'll make the motion. Did you make the motion, Mayor?
She did.
I made it. I'm saying it should be all, but it's all good, yeah. Some move.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Stewart. I suppose the reason, oh, I don't know why four is on there because the ones that are all in three.
They're all in three.
They're all in three. I don't know, it should be all.
Yeah.
Okay, discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance twenty-seventeen dash twenty-four, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Orlando, Florida relating to residential development standards in the Paramore Heritage Overlay District, amending chapter fifty-eight of the Land Development Code to provide flexible development standards, subject to appearance review for vacant, nonconforming, one- and two-family residential lots in the Paramore Heritage Overlay District, amending chapter sixty-seven of the Land Development Code to update procedures and alternative development standards for certified affordable housing projects, providing legislative findings and perseverance, codification, correction of scripturner's errors, and an effective date.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Stewart. We do have two appearance request cards related to this. The first is from Shaquille Williams, who yields her time to Luana Gelsor, and the second is Luana Gelsor. Okay, Ms. Gelsor, you have ten minutes then.
I didn't know she had a couple of words.
No, it's fine.
Luana Gelsor, I reside at seventy-six, seventy-four St. Stevenson Court, Orlando, zip three-two-eight-three-five. My family has property in the Paramore community. Address eight-one-five Hill Street, where we have a childcare facility for the last thirty-nine years, and eight-two-five West Washington, zip code three-two-eight-zero-five, where my nephews and my mom reside at that particular address. So I state that for the record because I was questioned about it, but I know I always state my address and where I reside. Why am I here today? I'm here to say, Mayor Dyer, I was here about two weeks ago, and I said I would look into this matter, and I said I didn't have a problem with it, but I had a concern when it comes through the word flexibility. That, to me, resonates change when we need to make change. I am concerned once again on record that thirty-three percent of the Paramore community is already owned by the city of Orlando, and this is supposed to allow you to build with, on smaller lots to be annexed or to be changed so you can build affordable housing or what type of housing, lots that currently do not meet the set aside, the setback of twenty-five feet like other places. My concern last week, like, two weeks ago was, it's for new development. My concern again is, how will this enhance or make it better for the Paramore residents? Hopefully, it will, but I am concerned when you have that word flexibility. So let me list what I'm concerned about when it comes to flexibility in the Paramore community, especially, but in District Five, sometime in District Six, but especially in District Five. Future land use policy S six-point-four, that's for alcohol sale. You cannot sell alcohol within a thousand feet of an established church or school. That was way for the cho, uh, soccer team, stadium, right next door to a church. We we always check, once again, that's just one. Ordinance twenty-sixteen dash ninety-five, might not mean anything to anybody else, but that was an ordinance put in place so the soccer team could have their special signage package. Was that done anywhere else? Couldn't find it. Been doing a lot of research on policies and ordinance changes. Another one, on the future land use, we're not going to spend all day, but we got policy S six-point-nine. That's the policy that we fought so dearly at one time when there was fifteen hundred homeless beds and fourteen hundred of them was just in the Paramore community. So that was an ordinance to to not allow homeless shelters to expand, relocate, or build new. So when the Orlando Rescue Mission came up to to the community, we were like, make sure you implement this policy. We did a quasi-hearing, some of them did. Next thing we know, it's moved to West Colonial and you changed the name so nobody would follow it. So you changed the policies, you changed what you do. I questioned your tactics. You got policy S six-point-ten. That's, um, property not owned by the city of Orlando shall retain the rights associated with, and subject to the standards required by the urban activity center. That's for Paramore. We'll see what happens there. Industrial growth on Church Street shouldn't be. That was policy X six-six-eleven. I can keep going on and on, but I really want to talk about another ordinance, the quasi-hearing process. Twenty-sixteen dash ninety-six. You change the process based on your discretion if it needs to go before an independent hearing officer, or do it come straight to the council? This was one of the only means the citizens had when we had a question about what was being, what was happening in our community, and this was the process. So you could determine if it meets your standards and it comes before you and you vote on it, or do we go through the process? I wonder why it changed this ordinance came to be because maybe some of the people was rising up or realizing that we could go, not go against government, but speak on our behalf how these rules are affecting us, but it passed. I can go on and on and on about the OPD headquarters. You say, what did this have to do? You change the policies, the ordinance, the rules, especially in the Paramore community, constantly, even our wetlands, on John Young and WDB Judge. If you drive down there, the trees are gone. That was a headwaters to the Wykowas Springs, gone. You're going to build an industrial park next to a resident community, happened to be in Orange County, and Northwest Community Center in the Mercy Drive area, for those who don't know where that that's located. We got a new clinic in Ivan Lane for the homeless. Nobody else wanted it, so it's in Ivan Lane. Rules and regulations. I even realized, doing my research, I forgot about this one. There was supposed to be radio towers in District Five, not too far from the area I just spoke about on John Young. They were in Orange County. Orange County said they couldn't build, so they got to annex into the city of Orlando, and the ordinance, the process went through. You voted and said, come on, we'll change the rules and let you go ahead and build. And you said, Ms. Gelsor, why are you questioning this here? Mayor Dyer, I said two weeks ago, not against it, if it's going to help the community. I questioned it because I'm concerned about that key word flexibility, and your flexibility leads me to go, your tactics, and your tactics made me go, is this only happening in the community of color, the urban community, the west side, predominantly African-American? I hope not, but I have more and more to talk about, and the more I looked up ordinance, the more I thought policies, not angry, disappointing I became of this administration. I'm disappointed. We elect you, whether we vote for you or not, you're elected by the people to represent the people in the best interest of the people and not a special group. A lot of these were for special groups, and my concern is flexibility. Will this be the end of Paramore now? Because remember, if you did not know about this before March first, and I did a public request, I'm still waiting for some information, you're you're out of luck. And for those who are in compliance, it doesn't benefit. So I am saying, Mayor Dyer, the stakeholders, the ones who have been there, property owners, taxpayers, in that community is saying, we constantly see changing of rules and regulations that are there to protect our community, but we see that it's not there and it's being changed, so the protection is going away. And I would say, if it's happening anywhere else, fine, because I asked that question. If this could be applied in any part of the city of Orlando, I wouldn't question it. And I did a public request and I'm still waiting for that answer. So if it can be applied, kudos. This is great. Maybe it would help us bring, um, put some houses in that community. I would ask it, don't be just affordable housing, but mixed-income housing. That's how a community grow. When you only put the same type of housing in a community, it stagnates. So Mayor Dyer, the key word is flexibility, and the key word is your tactics and your past behavior. Protect all. Protect all your citizens when you do these ordinance change, when you do these policy change, because we are watching and we're looking to you to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion among Commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. All right, Madam Clerk, how about if we do some first reads?
Ordinance 2017-26, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Orlando, Florida, annexing to the corporate limits of the city certainly and generally located east of Lake Baldwin Lane, south of Rixie Street, west of Jamajo Boulevard, and north of Hargrave Street, comprised of .57 acres more or less, amending the city's adopted growth management plan to designate the property as residential low intensity on the city's official future land use maps, providing for amendment of the city's official, official future land use maps, providing findings amendment of the city's boundary description and for amendment of the city's official maps, providing for severability, correction of scribners' errors, and an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Sheen. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 2017-28, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Orlando, Florida, rezoning certainly and generally located south of Rixie Street, west of Jamajo Boulevard, east of Lake Baldwin Lane, and north of Hargrave Street, and comprised of .96 acres of land more or less from the one-family residential zoning district with the aircraft noise overlay district in part, the planned development district with the aircraft noise overlay district in part, and no city zoning in part, to the planned development zoning district with the aircraft noise overlay district, providing a development plan and special land development regulations of the planned development district, providing for severability, correction of scribners' errors, permit disclaimer, and an effective date.
So move. Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Swarly do this last ordinance. Do we have any students in the audience today?
All right.
Okay. So Valencia, UCF? Valencia, okay. Thank you for being here, although I think it might be mandatory, but we enjoy having you guys in any event. So, and actually, you lucked into one of the shorter meetings today. So, okay, and, uh, let's do our last ordinance, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 2017-29, an ordinance amending chapter 55 of the Code of the City of Orlando entitled Regulation of Taxi Cabs, Limousines, Luxury Passenger Vehicles, Shuttles, and Other Vehicles for Hire by amending section 55.02, definitions, to amend definitions of passenger vehicle, transportation network company, and vehicle for hire, and by amending sections 55.14, 55.18, and 55.31 to delete provisions regulating transportation network companies, providing for severability and an effective date.
So move. Motion by Commissioner Ortiz, second by, I'm going to take you as a second Commissioner Ing's. Okay, and for you students, we are deregulating anything related to Uber and Lyft because the state legislature doesn't want us to make sure they have, um, drop background checks, vehicle inspections, or insurance. And so hopefully the state's going to do that.
Yep.
Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those, those opposed, motion carries. All right, that concludes the official business of the Orlando City Council for today.